All right, folks. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, September the 28th, 2021. Having called the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Councilmember Wayne Griffin, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. If you would, please join us in standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done. Father God, as once more again a few of your humble servants come calling by the holy and righteous name. Father, we want to say thank you for all of anyone for blessings that you bestowed upon us, for truly you've been good to us. Now, Father, if you would, as you come and be a part of this meeting, Father, may our decisions be pleasantries in thy sight, leading all the blessing as your precious Son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, council will move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have the packet containing the minutes from September the 14th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion that be received.
In a second.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, we have a special recognition this evening. And while we call all of them special, this one is particularly special to us this evening. And so I am going to ask any and all of the members of the Adams family that would like to join us in front, I think Zoe is going to, and if Rose or anybody else cares to join us down here, we've got a proclamation to issue this month. So I'm the oldest of five, but if I had an older sibling, I would hope that she would be just like Zoe Adams, because I can't think of anybody that I would rather have as a big sister than Zoe. And Zoe brought to my attention that RET syndrome, which this is RET syndrome awareness month, is taking place. And we are going to offer a proclamation declaring this RET syndrome awareness month. And would like to give you some information in regards to this month and those that it affects. And Rose is one of them that it affects. And so Rose and Zoe are here tonight with Elizabeth and her family. And so we want to offer a special proclamation this evening, and we are going to do that. And so you want to help me read this? All right. It says, "Whereas RET syndrome is often described as a mix of autism, Parkinson's disease, cerebral palsy, anxiety disorders, and epilepsy all rolled into one illness, RET syndrome is a rare postnatal genetic neurological disease that occurs almost exclusively in females and rarely in males. Every two hours, a girl is born with RET syndrome, but its symptoms usually do not appear until age six to 18 months, followed by a regression period during which acquired motor skills are lost, leading to lifelong impairments, including loss of speech, seizures, scoliosis, and irregular breathing patterns. The hallmark sign of RET syndrome is nearly constant repetitive hand movements while awake, and those diagnosed require maximum assistance with daily living activities, with more than half of those affected losing their ability to walk or even sit independently. This disorder is not degenerative, and research suggests that neurological symptoms may be reversed even after decades of SEER symptoms. Over the past 20 years, significant developments have occurred, including the discovery of the gene that causes RET syndrome, possibly reversibility of the disease. It is of critical importance to continue research to improve the lives of these amazing people. Therefore, I, Rick Daner, and the City of Greer proclaim October as RET syndrome awareness month, to encourage all citizens to help raise awareness of RET syndrome, and to honor the individuals like our own Rose Adams, their families, caregivers, and especially the amazing siblings like Zoe that love and care and protect them every day." Rose, I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you.
And to your sister, would you like to tell us anything else that's going on this month?
Have a good Florida.
All right.
When most people look at Rose, they see a special needs girl. But when I look at her, I see a perfect, beautiful, funny, kind, hard-headed, loving, and determined girl. When our parents told me that Rose had RET syndrome, I cried out of happiness because we finally knew how to help her in the best way possible. Rose will never be someone that we have to take care of, but she will always be someone that we love to take care of. And thank you for letting me and Rose come and tell you about RET syndrome.
Are we going to have some butterflies in the park?
Yes, in the butterfly garden.
In the butterfly garden, purple butterflies?
You got it.
Okay, great. imagine, and her husband fill their time taking care of Rose. But as you heard tonight, it is a privilege to do that. And so we appreciate them bringing us more awareness about this incredible issue, and hopefully we will find a cure for that soon. Council departmental reports are contained in your packet, and you can always ask department head or Mr. Merriman about any questions you would have in those regards. Ms. Howell waits in the wings to bring us our financial update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give you a brief review of the general fund for the months of July and August. Starting with revenue, $594,000 was collected in July, $765,000 was collected in August, for a year-to-date total of just under $1.4 million. Moving to expenditures, there was a fund balance usage in July of $5,000 and $380,000 fund balance usage in August, for a year-to-date total of $385,000. If you add that to our year-to-date operational expenditures of $4 million, we have year-to-date total expenditures of $4,398,000, which is 2% under budget. If you look at the dashboard where we compare actuals to benchmarks, you'll see that the year-to-date balance variance for August is a positive $28,000. And the cash balance as of August 31st in the general fund is $15,367,000.
Questions, Council? Comments? Thank you, ma'am, for the update. Council, we move to petitioners. Our agenda says petitioner, and we've got three this evening, as far as I can remember. This is one of the few, if only, times we have had multiple petitioners in one evening. So a chance to allow people to come and speak, citizens typically, to come and speak to council. As a reminder to council, and certainly an overview to you and the audience who may be new to these procedures, a petitioner is someone who calls and asks to be on the agenda on an item that does not appear on the agenda. You heard me ask if anyone was here to appear in public forum earlier. If the item is a matter of the agenda, then they speak in public forum. If it is a request that is brought, otherwise, it is brought as a petitioner. Council entertains the petition of the person that comes to speak, but does not take action in that regard at the meeting this evening. If one of the members of the council would like to bring this back before council, it will appear on a future agenda. So there is no comment from the council in regards to the petition that is brought to us this evening. I don't typically have a timeframe that I would allow you to speak, but simply ask that you be cognizant of the fact that this is part of the meeting and that there are also others that would like to address council this evening. But I will allow you to speak in regards to whatever it is that you have come tonight to talk about. With that, then, I am going to ask our first petitioner to come to the podium, and if you would, please state your name as a matter of record and also your address, so we will have that as a matter of record as well, too. Al Edmonds is here tonight to talk about an alleyway that is behind his house on Inglesby Street. Mr. Edmonds, are you with us this evening? Apparently not. Mr. Edmonds, are you here this evening? I'll ask again after the other two speakers, and we'll see if he slips in late. Ms. Susan Dobrazinski, floor is yours, ma'am, if you'll come to the podium, or Mr. Dobrazinski, if you would like to. The floor is yours. If you'll state your name and address as a matter of the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Alan Dobrazinski, and our address is the 11 Green Harvest Way, and that's Greer 29650. And we live off of Inglesby Street, and we're part of the former net-zero farm community. That was, I guess the developer's name is Mark Clayton. And I just want to make the council aware of what we're going through. It's a private community, and the road is a gravel road that goes into the community, and it's full of potholes, and it's not being taken care of. New gravel hasn't been put down. The drainage system is horrible. The drains run backward, not the drains in the homes, but I'm talking the ditches on the street, and they run backwards, or they also, or they sit stagnant, and they hold mosquitoes, and nothing is done right in the community as far as that goes. The property is slowly being overgrown. No one's taking care of it. And there are seven homes in the community. I have other neighbors here that they might want to speak to, but the developer has just disappeared. And the City of Greer, they've given them multiple warnings to take care of what they have to, I guess I could say, and they've done partial things that they're supposed to do, but they haven't finished it. And I just want to make the city aware of what we're going through. We've all bought really nice homes. The homes are really nice, but it's not the builder, it's the grounds. So it's the developer that we're talking about. And we've all moved from different areas of the country, and we're just kind of, I'm just kind of upset because we didn't get anything that mostly that we were supposed to get. They were supposed to be solar homes, we were supposed to have, you know, net-zero farm. We were supposed to have this farm on the grounds to work on and to actually pay for the homeowners association, and none of it has worked out. And the developer has just kind of like disappeared, and there's no communication. And so we're just making you aware that, you know, we're paying taxes in Greer, and we love living here. I mean, it's a really nice town. And I just think that, you know, we don't have garbage pickup, and I think that it would be a good idea if maybe the city somehow could maybe pave the road. But I understand it's a private road, and I've been told that many times by the city that I've talked to, and there's nothing they can really do about it, but Mr. Clayton is supposed to be responsible for that road. For as long as he owns it, he's supposed to be responsible, and he's supposed to have the gravel on the road every year. He's supposed to keep the potholes, you know, keep them, not potholes, he's supposed to fix them. And he's supposed to do this not only for us, but he's supposed to do it for the fire department and for the EMTs, if they need to come in there, you know, in an emergency. Right now, it's just, it's getting worse and worse and worse, and the road's getting narrower and narrower because the weeds are just growing over the sides of it. And I have neighbors here that are with me, they live at the very end, and the drainage system, it just stops right at their house, it goes nowhere. It just sits there, and so it just gets, the ditch gets full, and the mosquitoes are terrible in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to, you know, have you be aware of, you know, what we're doing. I'm not sure if you know the neighborhood we live in, but it's beautiful, we love it. It's just that I wish the developer would have followed through. He still has buildings that aren't tore down, which he was supposed to do, and they're like half-tore down or whatever, so it kind of, it doesn't look good for Greer. And so I just, I just wanted to speak about that. So thanks for listening to me, and maybe one of my neighbors want to speak, too.
Appreciate you coming.
Okay, thank you.
I show a hand. Are other neighbors here this evening? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll identify the council member and go from there. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think, I think we all know where it is. I know this is a...
I think it is five, but there's a little bit of...
Certainly not a new issue to us, and so we will follow up in some regard. Thank you. Mr. Plemons, James Plemons is with us this evening to speak in regards to record ordinance.
And I found myself here again. James Plemons is my name. The address that I have a business at is 13050 East Wade Hamlin Boulevard, Greer 29651. I come before you again today to talk about some things that I spoke about two months ago when I was here before. In front of you, we'll start out with that, the handout that I gave you. Each is the rotation request listing that I filed and got from the city that I spoke about the last time I was here. It gives in detail more of the actual numbers and stuff, along going, as you go through the list, and that's how you, that's how I came up with my original numbers. The same owner being of Collision Center for Greer Motorsports Towing and Greer Towing, which I've been in one meeting with Mr. Merriman since the last time I was here. He thought it would be best that we met with the chief and his delegate, which is Kara Blackwell, and speak about the upcoming proposed ordinance changes and what's going on and all that. That was me and Mr. Barnes spoke, sit-in on that meeting together. And at that time, they had decided that the avenue where they were at was not going to be a simple one, and they needed to back away from that. In the meeting that I did have with Mr. Merriman, he said that he brought the owner of Collision Center for Greer Motorsports Towing and Greer Towing in, and that he did indeed present a business license presented by the company, by the Greer City, that stated he was able to run business in town for those three companies. The question I asked Mr. Merriman was, did he present a three different tow trucks to be in compliance for that said company? Mr. Merriman informed me that he did admit that he was not in compliance, he did not have that. So my question is, and was to Mr. Merriman, why wasn't he immediately removed? Because he admitted, "I'm not in compliance." Why didn't he get immediately withdrawn from the, from the rotation list? It was said that they were going to give him time to come in compliance. Okay, it's two months now, there's still been nothing done. I want to know how long? How long do we give somebody that's breaking the law, your law that y'all wrote? How long do we give them time to come in compliance when they're blatantly breaking the ordinance that is in place? Says you have to have a tow truck to be on the rotation. How long do we give them time? I sent, I've got recommendations that I've been trying to work with, with Mr. Merriman, chief, and Kara. I sent an email, I believe it was the 7th of September. It was the day before I spoke to you, because I called you on the phone and apprising you for where we was at. I still have not had no kind of response from that email. It's the 27th of September, excuse me, 28th of September. That's, that's puzzling to me that I can't even get a response of, hey, we received your email, we're working on this, let's, you know, no kind of response. I don't know what that shows from, from, I mean, you know, basically, I need an answer. I'm looking for an answer. I would love to sit down as a group and actually hash this out, but I don't see a reason to rewrite an ordinance that all you have to do is enforce what's there. It's worked for 11 years, plus years. It's been in the, for 11-plus years. It's just 11 that I've been on the rotation, so that's why I said 11. Why would you not, why would you want to take up taxpayers' money to rewrite an ordinance that is working if you just enforced the ordinance? It was said to me that we want to use the honor system. The honor system's fine to use, but when somebody brings light to something that no, that someone is not being honorable about, it shouldn't be a question, you're either in compliance or you're not in compliance. It shouldn't be a question of, well, did you think you was doing wrong? Or you're either in compliance or you're not. But what was told to me by Mr. Merriman was, he admitted to not having trucks in compliance. So he knew he was wrong. Like I said, I'm saying him because he owns three companies that's not on the rotation list legally, whether in compliance. I don't see why you, as a city, would want to continue to allow that. Give you an example of something that I see as problematic. Person wrecks their car on the street in your city, and they're told by the city, Motorsports Towing, we'll just say Motorsports Towing towed your car, not given any other information other than Motorsports Towing towed your car. When you go on the internet and you Google Motorsports Towing, absolutely nothing comes up in the City of Greer under Motorsports Towing. No phone number, no address, no even recognition of it being in business. So the city just gave their car to somebody that can't be found? Is that really how we want to have the city being known for? You know, is it really fair for that customer to have to go through the legwork to find their car that should have been readily available, to the knowledge should have been? It's not the only one. You Google, you Google JLP Automotive, it'll come up. It comes up. Barnes Towing, Hilltop, they all come up. They're not shell companies, because they have trucks. They have more than just the business license that he presented at the meeting. The answer that I'm wanting, and probably others here, too, if we're going to allow this to happen, then fine, allow it. Tell us that's the way you're going to be and be done with it. We'll all open companies and all have trucks, and we'll open up multiple companies. I'll have JLP 1 through 10 and run them with one truck. I don't mind that, as long as we're going to be fair. I really would like more communication and more of an answer than I've gotten so far, because I send emails out. Two weeks should be enough to get some kind of response back, some kind of response, even if it's a no, that's a response. I'm totally being ignored, period, and that's the way I feel. So if I'm totally being ignored, how many other people get ignored? Yeah, it's problematic. I want to work toward a goal, but like I said, I don't feel like what I'm asking or what I'm wanting to happen is out of the ordinary. It's not something that's unreasonable. I want you to, on a tow truck, if you're on a tow, towing rotation list, I want said tow truck to be marked with appropriate address so that the person on the side of the road can see the truck, it's, okay, there's where my car is, snap a picture of it at the very least. But when the truck's not even marked with the appropriate name of who's towing it, how's anybody know where it's going? They don't. They, there is just way problematic stuff here that the ordinance don't need to be written, rewritten, it just needs to be enforced. Save the taxpayers' money, save the lawyers' money, save the time, spend time other places. Just enforce the ordinance. Don't rewrite it. It was said to me in one of the meetings, should we, should we grandfather the ones in this? I'm like, why would you grandfather somebody in, breaking the rule? Why would you do that? And, and I'm trying to bring knowledge to you that y'all don't have. I understand, you said last time, you don't, you don't, this is not on your list of what you know. You're not paying attention to that because you've got other parts of the city to run. I get it, I do, I do. I want to help, I don't want to be a hurt. I want to help with a solution. I'm sure that others here would like to help with a solution as well. But when you've got people that's blatantly breaking the law, that's taking money out of every one of your other taxpayers in the city pocket. When you take money out of my pocket and I'm legally doing business in your city, that's, that's not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for to be the only one on the list. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for everybody to play by the same rules, which is what your ordinance that's in place currently today says, fair and equal. I spoke about that last time. So, I mean, how much, how long is two months? If somebody came to your house and told you, yeah, we'll get to it, and two months went by, and they were remodeling your bathroom... by, and they were remodeling your bathroom, would that seem like they wasn't coming around? They wasn't talking, even the gentleman talking about can't, can't communicate with, with his driveway because people won't communicate. It, it, it puts a bad taste in your mouth, and then it makes you feel like you're not being listened to. I, 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 I'm just trying to apprise y'all of where we're at and ask you to please, let's get a decision made quickly. Uh, because, I mean, it's, it's, it's not right to let this man continue to run his business just because he has a city business license. He doesn't have a tow truck. He's not the only one, there's another. The, the people that's taking the cars out of the city limits is not in compliance. They're taking it out of the city limits. It, it's, it's your rule that y'all passed into law. Doesn't it, doesn't it make y'all feel like, "Wow, well, they're not following our rules, so what, you know, what did we even do it for?" You know, it's, it's blatant. It's not a gray area, it's black and white. And I, I, I will be in touch with Mr. Merriman, looking for y'all's answer. I, I, I would love for y'all to put it on, on the agenda for openly conversation about it. I'd love to hear questions because I want to answer your questions that I'm sure that you probably have, I want to answer them. So I'd love for it to be put on the agenda just to, just, not, not nothing about changing the ordinance, but just where we're at right now. Why do we want to spend money to change an ordinance when all we need to do is just enforce the one we got? That's, that's, you know, I won't take up none more of your time, no, today, but I, I probably not going away. I, I don't, I don't want it to sound bad, but I, I, we need a resolution. And I would love any questions, anybody wants to call, I'd, I'd love questions or talk or make it, make it on the agenda so everybody can come speak in open form. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we can work together.
So noted. Thank you, sir. So as we, uh, we move on, I, uh, I neglected earlier in the meeting to recognize our local county council member, Mr. Mike Barnes has joined us this evening, and thank you, Martin Mike, for being with us this evening. And, uh, always glad to have you participate in one of our meetings, whether it's related to work or just coming to see what's going on over here. So, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Uh, we have a, uh, a presentation this evening in regards to the Unified Development Ordinance as, uh, council is well aware, and many of you that, uh, possibly have read the paper, we are in the process of, um, creating, uh, and updating a, um, a development ordinance here in the city of Greer and quite an undertaking. Uh, Senior Planner Ashley Cotty joins us this evening to give us an update on where we are after several meetings with our consultants and those that have joined this task to offer insight from, uh, various different professions and, uh, views as to how we might make this the, uh, the best ordinance that we possibly can. Ms. Cotty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I just wanted to give a brief update on the project. It's been a while since I've been here to introduce the project to you and kick it off, so just wanted you not to forget about it. Um, you'll be seeing a lot more in the coming year, um, in terms of seeing draft, um, portions of the plan, um, to comment on, have us make revisions before the final adoption next summer. But there's been a lot of work going on in the last seven to eight months, that a lot of it's behind the scenes, and so again, I just wanted to remind you of the project, to give you kind of a progress update on what we've been doing and, and let you know kind of what's next. So, again, this project did kick off in January of this year, um, with a council presentation. We also had the consultant here from Kim Lee Horn, and we did meet with department heads, um, as well as administration to discuss kind of issues that we wanted to see addressed in this project, um, and just kind of get started. And then the next couple of months, the consultant was really busy doing issue identification, doing a code audit of our existing zoning ordinance and our land development regulations. Um, and then this summer, early this summer, we started steering committee meetings. Um, we held our first one in June and then another in September, um, which I'll update you on in the next couple of slides. We also had, um, some work sessions with the Board of Architectural Review to give some feedback on changes they might like to see to, um, kind of the Greer Station C1 zoning and the downtown overlay, and we held those in July and September of, of this year. Um, staff has also received draft sections of the UDO, um, section two and four, which are zoning and uses, and then portions of sections five and six, which are, um, the development standards and then site design as well. Um, those are really hefty portions, so we've been getting those, um, kind of in chunks to give, um, feedback back to the consultant. Um, a little bit more about the steering committee, it's kind of their roles. Um, they are going to help us identify issues in the current ordinance and LDR, just like staff and just like council, just like department heads. Um, they will be providing, um, input and reviewing sections of the UDO to help us craft that, ensuring consistency and streamlining of standards, and again, kind of helping us create that new UDO that creates, um, predictability for development. Um, so we're going to lean heavily on that group. Um, so here's just kind of an overview of the steering committee member list. Um, Mayor Danner and Councilmember Hopper sit on that committee, as well as members from our planning commission and our other boards. And then we have a variety of, um, representation from our development community, Upstate Forever, um, the Home Builders Association, and then our Development Corporation. Uh, Mr. Deaton's here as well tonight. So one of the things that we did after our first meeting, kind of introducing this committee to the project, was a little bit of homework and just asked, you know, "What are the key things that you guys want to see out of this ordinance update?" Um, and so some of the feedback that we've gotten, um, tonight, I just want to review with you, these are things that, um, staff definitely agrees with, these are things that we've identified as well. Um, it's, it's nice to hear corroboration from kind of outside parties to make sure we're on the right track and we have the right goals for this project. So some of those are having clear and thorough standards with some flexibility. Um, having a zoning classification for residential attached product or townhomes, um, this has come up a lot recently, um, when we were explaining why, um, DRD was used so heavily, that currently we don't have, um, a good zoning classification that allows for townhomes. Um, so that is something that the development community would really like to see. Um, improve regulations for cluster developments, remove barriers to missing middle housing types, diversify housing types, and another mentioned accessory dwelling units. Um, those all kind of go together. And then, um, have a matrix that clearly shows what uses are allowed where and under what conditions. Um, this is something staff is very much in favor of, um, and I'm sure council as well, having to flip through all the districts to see what uses, um, can be really onerous and confusing, um, both for staff and for developers who are looking to develop. Um, having a code section that allows for creative residential design submission, um, I think this is kind of similar to our DRD, um, but that section definitely needs some attention and updating. A critical path chart for use in the approval processes, um, so people, um, have a very clear understanding of where they start, what committees they go through, who has the final decision-making, um, responsibility, and that it's all kind of in one easy-to-read chart. Um, that's definitely something that we expect to have adopted. A better definition of the downtown historic district. Um, one thing that we will certainly be doing is taking a look at all of the overlays, not just the historic district, and see what changes need to be made in terms of the regulations that are in them, um, as well as the boundaries. Um, guidelines for adaptive reuse and infill, um, that also came up in our last stakeholder committee meeting, um, especially considering infill, and then there's a lot of adaptive reuse that's happening, um, conversions from residential to commercial, especially along the, the point set corridors, um, some, so some additional guidelines for that. And then, um, there was pretty good support for using, um, a density calculation versus a minimum lot size. So right now, we do have kind of R5, R7, 5, R10, R12. Those correspond with the square footage of the minimum lot sizes, so 5,000 or 70, 7,500 square feet for the minimum lot size. We're looking to potentially go to more of just a density calculation and take that minimum lot size out. Um, and the developers did express, um, some initial support for that. So what's next? Um, you know, we have kind of laid the foundations, we are very deep into the UDO development stage, um, and then that will be followed by refinement, um, which will be at the, you know, the helm of staff, the stakeholder group, public engagement that we get back, and of course, this group right here giving feedback on, on the drafts. So we will, um, continue to receive draft sections from the consultant and provide initial feedback. Um, we definitely want staff comfortable with a draft before it goes to stakeholders in this group. Um, and we'll be setting up a project webpage to get more information out to the community and developers so they can review the drafts once they're available and provide, um, feedback back as well, and also just get information about the project and the timeline. Um, again, that draft UDO review and revision cycle, and then, um, some stakeholder engagement that will be part of the adoption process. So that is all I had for you tonight, again, just a brief update, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to kind of take questions and bring you back periodic updates, whatever the council would like.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments?
Yes, uh, I have two.
Sure.
First is, um, when you guys started about this, we spoke about having, uh, the ability to allow, I guess, uh, community or, um, development-friendly, commercial operations inside residential development. And generally, that's going to be, uh, it won't be new development, it might be existing from our existing neighborhoods, and I didn't see that anywhere on here. And then the other is, I know you mentioned, um, about the, um, C1 historic overlay. The C1 definition needs to be, either that C1 needs to be done away with and a new title come up because i- if, if you say C1, which is Central Business District, well, is it going to look like the Central Business District? Um, because all of it's not going to be in the historical overlay. Um, you know, I, I, I think as C1 can, starts to move out, like it's doing, you know, we have a, a couple of properties that's, one we will address tonight, another's already been addressed. Um, and, you know, a- as the footprint starts to expand out, I, I think that needs to have some thought put into it.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, like the things that he is bringing up now, do you like, have a way of communicating that to us, you know, so that we can look at the changes as they're being made, or, or is that what you're talking about when you're talking about doing the, the website that you?
Um, yeah, we'll certainly be, um, giving you guys draft sections to review. Um, right now, they're just currently in development, um, they're not quite ready for feedback from, from this group yet. Um, but yes, you'll absolutely be getting draft language to look at before you're expected to adopt it.
Well, on a couple of slides back, you saw something about minimum lot size?
Mm-hmm.
Was there not, did it say, what did it say, uh, about the, and removing minimum lot size? So there's not going to be a requirement on a lot size? Is that what it says?
So, yeah, what we're looking at right now, and again, this is just draft, so you guys will be, um, able to give feedback, but we're looking at using a density calculation instead of a minimum lot size. We think that the height requirements, the parking requirements, the setbacks, um, and other requirements will kind of take care of that, and the minimum lot size isn't quite as necessary.
Yeah, going back to, to that, and you talked about driveways, I'd like to see it, definitely that a car fits in a driveway.
Okay.
Uh, I have been in certain other nearby areas and in certain little, small subdivisions where their car does not actually even fit in their driveway, and I certainly wouldn't want to see anything like that around Greer.
Sure, is that length-wise or width? The length where it...
Length.
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't a big car either. I mean, it wasn't like a bus or anything. It was a car.
Yeah, certainly, that's great feedback.
That kind of minimum lot size kind of surprised me when I saw that, so I hope it won't get too minimum.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can review in more detail if you guys would like to see more information about that. Anybody else?
Others? Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Yep, of course.
Before we move on, a show of hand, is Al Edmonds with us this evening? Apparently, no, no, we've got a couple of people joining. Is Mr. Edmonds in regards to an alleyway behind his house? Okay, just wanted to make sure, failed to check after the petition or so. With that then, we will move to the administrative report. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, first of all, I want to thank you on your comments about the UDO, and just by way of reminder, um, I had asked, uh, our senior planner, Ashley Cotty, to, uh, just, really just more of a milestone in the whole process, let you know where we are, um, and just remind you all that, uh, this is, one, a collaborative process, two, the things you saw tonight are, uh, for lack of a better term, just, um, some feedback that we're getting from that steering committee of things that they have experienced and would like to see in a final UDO. Of course, as we move through that process, um, you will be more and more involved with the drafts as we get, uh, get closer to that, but it is important to, uh, for y'all to understand that this isn't happening in a vacuum, and we wanted to touch base with you, um, on the UDO. A couple of quick reminders, uh, this weekend is the Chambers Arts and Eats. It will be taking place downtown, streets will be shut down, um, Friday morning, and I believe a map is available of the affected streets, uh, not only in the Chambers website, but I believe we have it on ours as well. Uh, the second thing is the Safety Breakfast, which we do annually, will be held next week, next Friday, as a matter of fact, on the 8th, uh, here at City Hall. And finally, the last thing, and Mr. Mayor, this will require a, um, a motion at, uh, first reading of, uh, Ordinance 48, 2021, specific to the Animal Control Ordinance. Um, we, we put that on the agenda, but in, in retrospect, I believe I would rather, uh, take it off this evening to provide you a little bit more background on the, some of the changes to the Animal Control Ordinance. Uh, specifically, uh, the intent of this ordinance is in, well, let me back up, not the intent of the ordinance, the reason we're bringing this to you is part of a larger recodification of a number of, of items throughout our code of ordinances that need to be updated, some of which are much more detailed than others. The Animal Control Ordinance is one of those. So with the amount of things that are being changed in the ordinance, I wanted to provide you with a little bit more background information on what's being changed and why before we gave you first reading on it tonight. I think it was a little bit premature for me to put it on the agenda, so I would ask that you, uh, just hold it over till I can put it back on. So with that, uh, that actually is the end of my administrative report, but I am available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council, with that then, we are going to, uh, move on to appointments of boards and We have this evening a, uh, a replacement, actually, to the Greer Trust Board of Trustees. That is the entity that, uh, we work with as a city that, uh, is part of the financing vehicle for this building and some other work that we did. Ms. Margaret Turner, who served faithfully on that committee and was a trusted member of that committee, has passed, and so we need to replace her. I would like to offer as a nomination this evening, the Reverend Earl Simmons to, um, fulfill, uh, her term, and then I've got more information in regards to the other members of the board. her term, and then I've got more information in regards to the other members of the board. But at this point, I would like to offer Reverend Simmons to fill that position on the Greer Board of Trustees. That comes as a motion from me. Do I hear a second?
Second.
With that then, any questions in regards to Mr. Simmons's service? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, it is also time for us to reappoint those that are already serving on the Greer Board of Trustees. This is a, a three... Three-year term? Three-year term. Excuse me, I see it now. It is a three-year term. Administration has talked with the serving members. They have all agreed to continue that service. I think it's appropriate that we are able to take the, take these as a board tonight. So, with that, I would offer to you that Mr. Robert Lynn be reappointed for another three-year term, Mr. Perry Williams be reappointed for a three-year term, Mr. Mark Thornton be reappointed for a three-year term, Mr. Reverend Earl Simmons be appointed for a three-year term, and Ms. Ellen Wall be reappointed for a three-year term. I will ask that somebody make that recommendation, please.
I'll make this a motion.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion or questions in regards to the Greer Trust Board of Trustees. Hearing done. The following board has been offered. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, Council. We'll move to items of old business this evening. The first, which is the first, excuse me, the second and final reading of ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one. This was held over, I believe, at our last meeting. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Cat Properties LLC located at two hundred West Point Set Street from C two commercial to C one. Ms. Cotty joins that, joins us this evening for that discussion, and I believe that Mr. Martin joins us this evening as well as a part of that discussion. So, Ms. Cotty, if you will give us any new or additional information in regards to second and final reading of ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one, I will then ask Mr. Martin to join us as well, too.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in before Ms. Cotty does, the, the reason this was held over, I think one of the reasons it was held over was council was looking for a little bit more information, and I think that request for more information was based on erroneous information that we had provided you through our presentation. There are, in fact, design standards in the transitional highway overlay district. We could have probably avoided a delay of, of this reading up to this point. I obviously can't speak to the, how would, the vote would have turned out, but I can tell you there would have been resolution to that two weeks ago. So, from the staff's perspective, we screwed up. We apologize for that. Apologize to the applicant for the delay, and I'm going to let Ms. Cotty then fill in any gaps on the rest of this discussion.
Sure. And so, just as a quick update, again, this is two hundred West Point Set. The rezoning request is to go from C two Commercial District to C one Central Business District. This is the property on the corner highlighted in red. So, this is the highway transitional overlay that we did not review at the last meeting. So, this property is within the highway transitional overlay, and with that, there are several regulations that will apply once they're ready to actually develop the property. But one of those is that they are subject to building material standards, which highlighted in blue on the screen. They will have to use stucco, brick, stone, natural wood siding, glass, or other materials with similar texture on at least eighty percent of the facade excluding doors and windows. And so, this is, again, eighty percent of all building sides visible from the highway transitional street, which, again, is point set. So, this will apply to facades from point set, not necessarily, well, in this case, you can really see the Miller side from point set, so the, the front and the two sides most likely would be subject to that requirement. There are additional requirements within that overlay specifically for conflicting land use buffers. They'll be subject to a fifteen-foot landscape buffer at the rear of the property since it does a but residential. And there's also some standards related to vehicular use areas. However, if this were to be rezoned, C one does not require parking, so this particular standard wouldn't apply. If it were to apply, it just says that parking cannot be in front of the structure, that it would need to be located to the side and to the rear. So, just to clarify, this overlay is in place regardless of the zoning. So, the zoning, whether it's C two, as it currently is, or if it were to go to C one, this overlay remains in place regardless. So, the key changes that would be made if you did approve the request from C two to C one relate to uses are a little bit different in C two and C one. They're, they're kind of a wash in staff's opinion, but there are a few that are different. But the key kind of differences are setbacks. In the C one district, there are zero lot lines. Again, they would be subject to that fifteen-foot rear buffer because that's an overlay requirement, but there would be no front or side setbacks in C one. C one also does not require parking, whereas C two would require six spaces, six spaces per thousand square feet of leasable floor area for office, which is what has been told to us that this will likely develop as. And we do have standards for each kind of use if this were to be developed as something else other than office. And then height. C one, the maximum height is sixty feet, whereas C two, the maximum height is thirty-five feet. So, again, kind of the key differences for this zoning decision would be kind of setback, parking, and the height of the building, and the building materials would be enforced regardless of zoning district. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant, Mr. Martin, is here as well.
Mr. Martin, after we have had a heaping helping of crow, would you like to come to the podium and address this issue this evening?
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Again, the, the intent of the change of the zoning and its purpose is primarily for the setback reasons. With C two, there's a twenty-five foot off of Point Set and twenty-five foot off of Miller, which puts the, the building structure all the way in the back corner of the property, essentially. What I intend to do, would like to do with the property is begin the expansion of downtown, down West Point Set Street. The, the intersection of West Point Set and Main Street, the B B and T Building, I'm familiar with some, some ideas and some projects that are trying to be put together with that corner, as well as, you know, moving down the street, the Gregory Building, the gas station. I don't know if we'll see development or redevelopment from the AT and T Building, but my hope would be to put a structure on this location that is more similar, not, not as deep, not, certainly not up to the sidewalk, but closer to the sidewalk in order to encourage infill development for, from a downtown-type development from this building back to the, the center of town. And I think the opportunity to do this is ripe. The stars seem to be aligning pretty good with the things that we have. Have not figured out exactly how big that, that I can build, because it's really going to come down to what I can afford. I would like to do at least a three-story building in order, again, to really make it a, a statement that downtown is progressing that direction, and that's really what my intent, and obviously to move my law office, so that I can have more space as I've outgrown the space that I'm in as well. So...
Thank you, sir. If you'll just stand by, and maybe questions from yourself or Ms. Cotty. Floor is open for discussion, discussion or questions.
Brian, were you advised by staff that this was in that highway transitional?
So, in fairness, I've served on the planning commission for a long time.
Right.
And I've known it was in the highway transitional and known the circumstances that I was constrained with doing it. I was not advised by staff that it was in the highway transitional.
There, there is a thing in the, that transitional district, the ordinance, and it talks about that prior to any, I guess, staff is supposed to ask for a meeting with the developer, you, the developer's designer, and the architectural review board, and that is pre-designed, so you're not hit with, oh, my gosh, I didn't know I was going to have to do this.
That's correct, and I haven't progressed to that point.
Okay, but, but you, you are aware of that?
Fully aware, yes.
All right, good.
Um, point, and part of the point of using Langley is with, with his role in Board of Architectural Review, and, and again, he, he has also assisted me with the buildings downtown that we have redone as well, so, yeah, fully aware of those requirements.
Good, good. What, what are your plans for parking?
So, at this point, one of the ideas that I am looking at is building, particularly building a, a three or four-story building, is to build the first floor half of, of the space and be able to have covered parking under the second half, and then there will be additional parking, because I obviously can't build a building. I can't afford to build a building big enough for the whole space, but there would be additional parking behind it towards the residential aspect, and we've got to have a, a nice, large landscape fifteen-foot buffer that we can't use for parking. It's got to be landscaped for that full fifteen feet between the house that is on Miller and adjacent to the lot, but there will be, I plan parking on that lot, and right now, one of the, the ideas that I'm looking at is condominiums for sale, as that is a, a product that we currently don't have in our downtown market, and that would also reduce the amount of parking that would be necessary, rather than it being a full commercial building, but I do plan to have parking on site.
Now, you said that, that there are no requirements for parking. What did you?
Yes, sir. If, if the property were to be rezoned C one, there is no required parking. However, a developer can certainly put parking in, and if they do, then the parking would have to conform to standards.
Yeah, he, now, he said he wants to have parking, but what happens if he orders, were to sell, and then somebody else came in, and they wouldn't have to do no parking if it was C one?
If it was C one, yes.
No parking?
Mm-hmm.
Then where do cars go if you got a?
Um, well, there is a public parking lot right across the street at the, at Police Department, so...
Public lot diagonally from the, from the building.
So, all the properties that are zoned C one, all of the blue that you see up on the screen are not required to have parking, except residential. We brought in amendment, I believe, last year, that one per residential unit.
We have three commercial buildings in downtown, and all three of them, uh, well, two of them had no parking. We bought them. The third one had a parking lot that we're able to use with both the other two buildings, so, yeah, I'm very much aware of the parking.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, we held this issue over, but it comes as second reading denied. Is this literally second reading, or we did the first reading a second time? How, how's that work?
I believe it was just tabled, not held, so, I mean, it's just second reading, so first reading was...
No, it was held over because the, the motion specifically was to hold, hold it over so we didn't have to actually remove it from the, didn't have to take action to take it off the table.
Right.
So, the question was, was at the last meeting, was that a new business item at first reading, or is this?
No.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. We held second reading over to this meeting. We'd already given this property first reading, and I believe that was the meeting Mr. Airwood was in at, was absent at, so we've given it first reading. This is second reading. Yes, sir.
Thank you for clarification. Council, second and final reading of ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property by Cat Properties LLC located at two hundred West Point Set Street from C two to C one. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
So, you said it's the setback, the parking, and the height. That's right, and you said it was sixty feet.
Those are the key differences between C two and C one. Yes, sir.
And the height is, this one's sixty versus, what was it, thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
And so, that's, I guess, we would have to be in agreement with Mr. Martin's vision that this is, the height of this building is going to be consistent of what develops from this point down into the city from this point forward. And the AT and T building, I think, is on the other, is on the corner right next door. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And then he's, yeah, he talked about the, I guess, the tire, there's a little tire shop or some type of garage, and then everything else kind of going down to the bank. It's hard to envision, it's hard to envision that height going down through there, but I mean, it's...
Looking first about the trip.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's really tall.
One of the things, one of the things in that overlay district is that, I, I guess it would be the, the Board of Architectural Review. The, the way I read it is that whatever structure is built, it, it can't be, you can't have something really big and then something really small beside it. It's got to, you know, it's got to fit, and I think that's, uh, Architectural Review will probably be the one who makes that decision, but...
Well, this will be a big contrast to the building next to it, no doubt about it.
To the AT and T?
Or the, and the other way.
And the search office. Yeah, it, it most definitely will, but it's a, you know, it, it will. That's, but if that's a concern, that's in the ordinance, that, that has to be taken into account.
Well, I think that was a good point made as well, too, that, you know, you're within literally two blocks of, of Point Set and Main, so, I mean, you're, you know, you're literally right downtown. I mean, we just miss the width of the street of being in the history, you know, in the, in the overlay district downtown, and while we're all talking about the height of existing buildings, that is subject to change just as much as what happens on this lot.
Well, you know, this is somewhat off-topic, but since the building or that the site is in that highway transitional district, I, I remember when we did this, transitional district, and it was, it was not for anything close to downtown, it was for the, we were, there was development happening on Point Set closer to eighty-five, eighty-five, closer to twenty-nine, and we wanted to make sure that even though it was a commercial development, it kept the, a lot of the residential look, because that's why it says in here that the roof line has to be, has to be sloped. So, I, I'm assuming, I mean, you can't have flat roofs, but it had at least a five-twelve pitch is what it says, so... That might need to be looked at as we do in the U D O.
All good points. Other comments? Discussion? Questions? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Christopher and Sarah Dickinson located at Gibbs Shaws Road by one hundred percent petition into establishing zoning classification of R twelve for said property. located at Gibbs Shaws Road by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of R12 for said property. Any newer additional information, Ms. Cotty?
Just that the planning commission held a public hearing on September 20th, excuse me, and recommended approval.
Comes with approval from the planning commission, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel will move to items of new business. The first is ordinance 48-2021. You've heard that staff has asked that that item be held over. I'll entertain a motion that this item be held over for, until it's brought back before counsel.
Second.
Any question in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second item of new business, first reading of ordinance number 49-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Butch Sims Jr., located at 200 Broadest Street from C2 to R5. This is in regards to a rezoning request for one parcel located at 200 Broadest Street in Spartanburg County. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is a rezoning request, again, from C2 to R5, so commercial to a single-family residential district. This is an aerial of the site, it is located at the corner of Broadest Street. This is a current zoning map. The red that you see is C2 Commercial District. That kind of lighter tan color is all RM1 Residential Multifamily. And then the comprehensive plan does identify this area as a traditional neighborhood. This is a current street view of the site. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on September 20th and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay. So noted, and we may come back to you in just a second. I'll entertain a motion for first reading of ordinance number 49-2021. Second. Floor's open for discussion.
Now, this is the one that's at the corner of Broadest and Gilbert, used to be Old Nars?
Yes, sir.
And if they, what's going to be the actual lot size if they says it's going to subdivide and build two? What's going to be the lot size on?
So I'm not certain what it'll be, but it'll be somewhere between 5,000 and 7,500 square feet. Because I believe when split, it didn't quite meet the requirement for R75. So somewhere between 5,000 and 7,500 square feet.
And are they both, are they going front Broadest and they're going front Gilbert?
I'm not certain, they haven't submitted any building plans yet. But one of them will certainly front Broadest, and the other one could front either.
Would y'all care to speak in regards to what potential plans you may have?
Good evening, my name is Vanessa Henderson, I live at 16 Antioch Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm here speaking on behalf of Mr. Sims, who is sitting in the audience. Both of the houses going to front Broadest Street. We are hoping to do like, single-family, three-bedroom homes with two baths, hopefully to do Charleston-style. We're working with James White from Greenville Construction Company. He's going to be the one that's going to be doing the building. If y'all need us to get y'all some preliminary drawings of what we need to, what we proposing to do, I can get that to you.
That's, I don't think, that's, yeah, I just want to know which way to front.
Okay.
The size.
Okay.
That's right, because you have a single family, that'll fit good.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Others? Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, last item of new business this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 50-2021. This is an ordinance approving a major change to a planned development of a certain real property in the City of Greer related to the Blue Ridge Plantation Development. Ms. Cotty?
Go away.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So this is a major change request. I'm going to go through a series of slides, kind of highlighting both the existing build-out of Blue Ridge Plantation, as well as the proposed changes that would be in the new statement of intent and associated site plan. So I'm sure you are all very familiar with Blue Ridge Plantation, but here is kind of an aerial of the site. And then on the right, you see kind of the zones that are identified that we'll go in more detail about. And this is along Gross Meadow Road, and then that Spine Road that has been built by the developer during the first phase of development. These are some additional aerials showing kind of the areas that have been built out, as well as the remaining. You'll see a small X on a portion, this was formerly Zone 12, identified for boat storage in the original statement of intent. They will be removing this from the PD and not developing that portion in the new proposal. Okay, so, Blue Ridge Plantation, the latest statement of intent was revised in 2006. This project dates back to really 2002, with several revisions along the way. But at last count, it was approved for 1,347 units, over 449 acres, with a density of three units per acre. They did identify 14 zones. 10 of those zones were residential, two were recreation, and then one zone was a mix of commercial. It did identify a potential assisted living facility, and also its recreation facilities. And then it did have one zone, as I mentioned, for boat storage. So the zones with red circles around them, those are either partially or almost completely developed. I think there's maybe three lots in one of those. And then Zone 14 at the top, that you'll see, is lakeside development, and that is the least built out at this point. Most of the single-family homes have been developed. And then they'll be doing a portion of townhomes, which kind of look like duplexes, but they're in townhome units together. So Zone 1 was approved for 200 units, and they have either built or kind of have in progress, but have 110 lots platted. Zone 2 had 95 units approved, and they platted 85. Zone 9 had 100 units platted, or, excuse me, approved, and they have 88 platted. And then Zone 14, again, lakeside, they were approved for up to 300, both attached and detached units, and they have platted for 182. And again, that Zone 12, we are kind of taking out of commission. So I'm going to go through the residential zones first. So the new statement of intent proposes a total of 1,344 units. This is three less than the original. I mean, we're just kind of considering them sort of equal to the original. And they are maintaining the three units per acre of density that was in the original plan development proposal statement of intent. So for the residential zones, some things that were not defined in the original statement of intent that staff felt was important to include in this update is each residential zone will have to, will include a minimum of 20% usable open space for pocket parks. Again, this will have to be usable, this is active space. But we're not going so far as to find exactly what it has to be. But at the time of final development plan and final plat, they will have to identify that 20% for each zone. We did also include architectural elements in the statement of intent. Contrary to popular belief, the original statement of intent for Blue Ridge Plantation did not have any building material standards. There were some identified in a few final development plans, but those were approved by Planning Commission. And final development plan is really just the actual layout, it shouldn't be anything architectural. So those standards were not necessarily enforceable. And so with this new statement of intent, it does say that they have to have a variety of elevations and types of products. Materials will consist of brick, stone, hardy board, or kind of a higher-quality vinyl siding. They will have to have a minimum of two accent materials. And then no more than two houses with the same elevation can be approved kind of in a row. So we'll be, staff, if it were approved, when we get building permits in, we'll be checking the elevations to make sure that they are different from the houses beside them. We also put in development triggers. None were defined in the original statement of intent. So with FDP approval, again, that's very similar to a preliminary plat, which usually goes to Planning Commission with a more traditional subdivision. So with that, that's kind of 0% build-out. Before, we'll approve that FDP or final plat, they'll have to put in the trees, sidewalk, or streetlights along that Spine Road, or have certain portions of that bonded with a timeline for expiration. And then with, at 50% build-out of each zone, whatever that amenity space for that zone that they've identified, that will have to be installed as well, before we'll issue permits for the rest of that zone. So these in blue circles, and then there's one gold that's on the blue. Sorry, it was difficult to find that many colors. But these are the zones that are kind of left for build-out that are residential. So I'm just going to kind of go through what was originally proposed, and then what's proposed now. I realize it's a lot of information. You guys can feel free to stop me while I'm talking, or we can answer questions at the end. But Zone 3, the original statement of intent had 172 units. The new zone proposes up to 180. The maximum density would be 4.4 units per acre for this zone. The minimum square footage would be 1,200 square feet. But only 20% of the homes that are in there could be at that 1,200 square feet. The rest would have to be a larger product. And you'll see that for all of the developments. The original statement of, or the original preliminary development plan identified several zones at a minimum of 1,200. They had some at 1,500, and some at 16, and some at 1,800. So it's not a big difference, but we did want to make sure that for each zone, there was, again, a variety of housing sizes and a max of that smallest that's available. So for Zone 4, it was originally approved for up to 65 units. The new proposal would be for up to 97 for a 4.6 unit per acre density. Again, it does have that 1,200 square foot minimum. Again, only 20% would be allowed at this square footage. Zone 5 was originally approved for 75 units. They're proposing up to 79 for a 3.4 unit per acre density. And this one is a very low percentage of the small units at 1,200, with only 5% allowed. Zone 6, they were approved for 125. The new proposal is 166. Again, that same 3.4 density as Zone 5. And this one would be allowed to have up to 50% at that minimum square footage. Zone, I lost my way, did I go over 6? I think I did. So Zone 10 was originally proposed for, or approved for 90. This would allow up to 150% of that minimum square footage. And then the last zone was originally 65 units, and this would allow up to 114. Again, that 50%, 1,200. So you will see some higher units. You saw some lower units in the kind of originally built out. Again, I just want to kind of clarify that the overall unit count is still going to be pretty equal with 1,344 instead of 1,347. And the overall kind of 449 acres will still meet the three-point, or three units per acre density that was in the original statement of intent. So the, you know, new units are just differently dispersed, but kind of similar number overall. So the next zones I want to focus on are Zones 7A and 7B. In the original, this zone was combined, and it was one zone, and it was identified as the commercial, the recreation space, including the clubhouse and Olympic-sized pool. And then they kind of called it town center retail, they said they might want to see an assisted living center. And that was really the extent of the definition of this site. So this, I would say, is probably the largest change in the development. So they are proposing to kind of split it, and originally, I think it was 44 acres. So Zone 7A will kind of resemble that original zone. This will be where the commercial space will be, and also, again, that clubhouse and Olympic-sized pool. They do have in the statement of intent that they will build an Olympic-sized pool. But if they don't, that they will be required to build three smaller pools in different zones throughout the development. They, Mr. Aho, the developer, is here, and he can kind of go over that, but they're doing a study of what size they might need based on the development, so they're not kind of certain at this time. But again, we've kind of put safeguards in place that if they don't do that Olympic-sized pool, that they'll have to make up for it elsewhere. So we did also include a list of uses in the statement of intent this time. And they generally comply with our OD District, our C1 and C2. We also included language that they will have to have screening from the roadways with heavy landscaping and a fence and wall, and a 25-foot wide raised berm. We also included some kind of site development standards, where we would require the commercial structures be placed along the Spine Road and have the parking to the side or to the rear. And this is so that, you know, when you come into the development and kind of along that Spine Road, you really see the retail, and you don't see like a sea of parking. So it kind of gives it more of that town center feel. So with that, Zone 7B, they are proposing to reduce the amount of commercial space from the original, or not really space square footage, but acreage. And in its place have 151, or up to 151, single-family attached homes. This one would, again, kind of have that 50% maximum of that 1,200 minimum square foot. And then one other important thing for kind of that clubhouse and that pool, that is amenity for the entire development overall. And so we, staff, thought it was really important to include a development trigger, which was not included in the original statement of intent. So those amenities will be required to be put in at 50% build-out of the overall site. So no, no additional zones will be platted until those amenities are in place, once you hit that 50%. Okay, so we've gone through residential, we've gone through kind of the commercial section. The last kind of space is open space or amenity zones. This didn't really change much at all, it still protects 88 acres overall. We did just kind of remove the specific amenities that were included in the statement of intent. Again, they will have to have usable, and they will have to have that amount of open space, and they still will have to have the walking trail throughout. It just doesn't specify, you know, it has to be this size soccer field. They may want to do sand volleyball or a dog park. But again, so Zone 8, it's a little difficult to tell, but there's, the main part is this kind of darker green, that's the first blue circle. And then there's a belt above the light blue that goes across, and then down and below behind Zone 3 in the yellow. And then there's a small portion up at the top that is the existing pool that's out there now. And so that's all kind of the consolidated open space. And that's in addition to the 20. And that's in addition to the twenty percent for each zone that will be required. Um, and then Zone Thirteen is, um, just the, the Spine Road and the right-of-way, and that includes kind of the sidewalk, street trees, curbs that go along, um, with the right-of-way. And then another development trigger that we built in is that the trail system will have to be installed at sixty-seven percent build-out of the overall development. And, um, that red hatch line that you see on the screen kind of denotes the proposed area for the trail system. So, that's a lot of information I threw at you.
Wow, that really is.
I am. I am happy to answer any questions. Um, again, the developer is here to answer any questions that you have as well. Um, we first got this proposal back in July. We've gone through kind of three to four rounds of revisions. Um, this was one of the city's first PDs, and we've learned a lot in twenty years. Um, so we wanted to respect the original intent of the project, but also build in some safeguards and things that we've kind of lessons learned. So with that, I will answer questions, or I will gladly defer them to Mr. Aho as well.
Counsel, before we go any further, let's make this official. Is there anyone here that is the owner of this property or representative of the owner of this property? So noted. And, uh, with that, please stand by. I'll entertain a motion to receive, uh, ordinance fifty twenty-twenty-one. We've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
It's actually, I think it's gonna wind up being, once it's all said and done, with these changes, it actually, um, it's gonna be more, more value to the community. And I'll, I'll tell you why I like the idea about the, the cert percentage of smaller square foot homes being built in with others, because that, and, you know, we're, as we have experienced, um, I guess, the, the blessings of economic development and growth, it's also driven prices higher and, uh, residences. And this is a way for a person to be in a really nice neighborhood, maybe not have to pay as high a price for something that's, you know, six, seven hundred square feet. Uh, so, that's good idea. Yes. I like the idea, too, that they got the flexibility as far as the walking trails and, you know, dog park and other, other things that they may wanna offer. I think that flexibility is good.
Others?
I was interested about the pool, because when you're talking about that many homes, and I'm thinking one pool for this neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, so there is one pool that's existing, again, up in the corner, um, but the main kind of pool and clubhouse, um, is proposed to be located in that red zone, um, along, along with the commercial. And again, it, it does say very specifically in the statement of intent that if they do not do kind of the, the giant-sized pool, that they'll be required to do smaller zones, or smaller pools, um, in three groupings. So, um, two zones will share a pool in three different spaces.
But that's something that they get the option to look at, because it might be...
Yes, um, they may just want the big Olympic pool, and if they do, then that's fine.
Or they may just want to put...
Or they may... Yeah.
With this bigger development, how will the homeowners' association be? Will there be clusters for one area and something else? Or how will the homeowners' association be designated with that thirteen hundred homes? Will they all be under one?
I'm gonna defer to the applicant developer on that one.
Good evening. My name's Paul Aho. Actually, I'm in South Carolina address. So to answer your question, uh, each unit now is set up as individual units. We have a master declarant, so there is one, one HOA controls all them units. So currently, we, we actually took over all the units right now. We changed the HOA, and we're trying to get everything back on track, because there was a lot of mess there. So, but yeah, they all be, have their own individual unit, but it will be still overseen by one master declarant, which would be Blue Ridge Plantation HOA, because currently, that's what it's set up as.
I don't know that some, like, I think Beaverbrook, uh, for instance, has a couple of different associations on different streets or something like that. So I didn't know, I mean, because this is a very big, uh, development, you know, with thirteen hundred homes in it?
Yes, ma'am.
You know? I thought seven hundred was big. I wasn't aware of it being this big. I went on here on two thousand and six. Yeah.
Thank you for the information. Others? Any questions?
Mr. Aho, what other developments have you worked on similar to this size? I know this has gotta be on a lot larger scale.
It is. It's, it's one of the largest. We currently have one in Boiling Springs. It's same.
Does this big, too?
Yes, sir.
Oh, wow, okay. And so, uh, I think one of the challenges that the previous developer ran into was just kind of going into this tackling, trying to tackle too many phases, and whatever, you can call them zones, or whatever you wanna call them. How are you gonna kind of organize this project so that we don't, you know, just go out and clear-grade everything, and just have a lot of places just kind of sitting if, if the market does turn or does cool, you know, to a certain extent? Do you have any kind of, um, just any kind of plan for anything like that?
We do.
You do?
Yep. So Zone Three, Four, and Five is where we're actually already engineering, and that'll be our first, we'll, we'll kick off in there. And then we have a plan of five-year build-out, and then we're actually gonna share the project. We, we also are builder, so Enchanted Homes is also the builder. Um, this is just a parent company of Enchanted Homes, and we're sharing that with another builder. So in that five-year build-out, we'll build in one zone, and then they'll build in another zone, the other builder. So in a five-year span, we'll be, we plan to be out of there. So it'll be, it'll start in three-zone, you know, Three, Four, Five, and then once we start building, get, you know, fifty, seventy-five percent in there, we'll already be pushing dirt in other ones.
Is this, this is the same part that was initially started off by Leisure Shouse or something? Is that right?
I, I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
They were ever in there. Most of the homes originally were all, were custom.
Yeah. And I'm thinking Leisure Shouse sorted that subdivision.
They may have.
They, they might have.
Yeah.
Yes.
And just to give the residents a little peace of mind, I know one of the ongoing issues was the, the roads. And, uh, can we kind of speak to how our policies have changed on roads and bonding, and our expectations of developers if this, as this project is gonna move forward?
Sure, I know that the, uh, the state's gonna require traffic impact analysis with full improvements based on the build-out plans. Um, so that's always gonna be a part of it. And then, of course, any of the roads within the, uh, the development itself that are going to be, uh, dedicated to the city for maintenance will have to meet our standards. So that, that's gonna be part of it. So there, there's gonna be obviously the quality standards of the, the roads within the development, and then the, the ability of the external road systems to handle build-out.
Just a little background, you may not be aware, because the previous way to be a lot of development was just to put the, the scene, the first coat of asphalt down, and the manhole covered, but almost stick up this much. But the intent was to get all the construction traffic in and out of the neighborhood, and then have a, a real nice surface. But, um, when the project slowed, uh, the road was left unpaid for a long period of time, and it created a lot of frustration for the existing residents that lived there. So I, I just brought that up to make it clear that that's not gonna be, uh, the case we did before with this project.
Correct. And I, I actually would like to speak on that a little bit. We, we, so when we purchased Lakeside Development last year, December of last year, there were some outstanding punchless items that we, ECS Development, took care of. We paid for the roads to be paved, the Spine Road to be paved, all the catch basins to be fixed. So all that punchless items, we handled on behalf of Mr. Bruce. So we're, we're aware of that, and we actually, how we set up our company, we're fully integrated, vertically integrated. We have our own crews, our own equipment. We do our own paving, we do our own curb. So every development we do currently, we pave all the way to the, you know, full-depth paving before we even start building in it. So we don't leave, we try not to leave anything to the county or any municipality we are.
Others?
Well, that shows that, dude. Long time coming.
Sir, we do appreciate you working so closely with our staff on this, and, uh, as, as you have heard, it has been a long time coming. We wish you much success.
Thanks.
So thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to, to receive ordinance number fifty dash twenty-twenty-one. We got one?
Yes, we got it.
Took almost as long to get here as it did to build this place out, didn't it? I have a motion in a second. Any, uh, discussion or questions in regards to ordinance number fifty dash twenty-twenty-one? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Mayorman, we don't have anything to consider in executive session.
No, sir.
That being the case, we stand adjourned.